Okay, I'd like to follow line commission meeting to order for this February 27th, 2019. Do we say like? I'm not just for a second. He wanted to be here, make him be here.
We do have to dial one, huh?
It says I don't.
So it's pretty normal.
No. No, can you help me? You want someone to not do one, and that's not one of the rules.
We have to explain the way to the survivors.
It's here.
Oh.
One running the green.
Down the front.
Right?
And ready? No, it was, it was that. I'd like my, my speaker. Lily Thomas.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Who was, who was her character? I'd like. Okay, now let's say pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so as far as roll call goes, who'd say your name and say that you're here? Karen is here. Cynthia Brown is here. Wendy Jordan is from here. Blake. All right.
Forrest King is here.
All right. And the first item on the agenda, well, before we start that, I wanted to add an item to the agenda. Marty was wanting to talk about just opening some dialogue in discussing garage size issues. All right, so I'd like to move if we add that discussion to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, vote.
Aye.
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 Well, you won't start right now.
Go ahead.
So we've had comments from a lot of people regarding the garage size, the limitations that we have. If you just go down the hill or hurricane, you don't have really any limitation on what a garage size would look like. And I've kept thinking about this over the weekend, Tim and I were on the pretty homes. And we landed in this one house that said it had a 10-car garage. And we're like, let's go see what this place looks like. And it wasn't that big of a house, it was maybe 3,000 feet or 3,500 feet, something like that, for a size of a house with a 10-car garage on it. And so we go into the garage, and it's really only what I would call a four-car garage. But the one garage was like three cars deep. And so from the front, you don't see that much of it because the width of the lot makes a difference. And actually, from the front, you're not, you don't really even notice that this thing looks out of place in one bit. Because the roof on these things, when you get down to like Dixie Springs, and this is what I challenge everybody to do is, take a drive-through there, you're gonna see a lot of RV garages, extra garages, you know, four-car garages, that kind of a thing, in Dixie Springs. And it just looks like a nice neighborhood. And the one thing that I like about not necessarily having a limit on this is it's attached garage, first off. And this only applies to attached garages, not an accessory building that, you know, allows them to build unlimited and whatever. I'm talking about attached garage, which means it's gonna be stucco like their house is. It's gonna look like that. The roofline connects and it's integrated. Architecturally, it's just a garage. But it allows someone to go larger. We've had numerous customers, our residents come in here and complain to me about the size limitation. They wanna have a bigger garage. Not just, you know, I've talked to Jerry, but Linda Murphy, who was building out in Gooseberry, you know, she was worried about it, concerned about it, wanting to have a little bit bigger garage, afraid that what garage she even had was not gonna be to code and, you know, and so forth. So this comes up quite often. And I kinda like their attitude down there. They just say that you, if you're building a house, you can't cover that lot any more than a certain percentage of the lot. And in this particular case where we have large lots, you could still have a pretty big house, given those kind of parameters. And I'm not sure what's wrong with that. Because if you have even a 2,000 square foot house and you have a lot of garage space, I mean, we're telling people right now, based on our current code, that they only have a thousand square foot garage, which could be a two-car or three-car garage.
I agree with you. I think our restrictions are way too restrictive. And then people are forced to go to residential R5.
Well.
And then it crops up more problems.
And the one thing that I liked about, in having some conversation with other people about this, was that, you know, most of us don't like junk outside. We don't like the travel trailers, the motorhomes, or, you know, even in some cases, you've got a two-car garage, you don't have any place but your lawn, or so it's outside, you know. And if we allow a larger garage, a lot of that crap would be probably inside as opposed to outside. And I don't see where that's a huge negative for me, anyway. Anyway, it was fun walking through a 10-car garage. It just, it was tall, but no taller than the house. It didn't look out of place one bit. And I just challenge each of you to take it a few minutes over the weekend or something, drive through Dixie Springs, you'll see a lot of RV garages. They look completely appropriate. We come up with, you know, some guidelines as far as it can't be higher than the rest of the house. It has to be attached, it has to have, you know, doors on it, you know, whatever parameters would feel like are appropriate. But these are the work ordnance that I copied to show you where we're at. And basically, they just say you can't cover but X, Y, Z of what the property size is. And can you imagine someone with a one-acre lot trying to cover 50% of the lot with a house? You know, I mean, that'd be better than what we built. It's impossible for someone to really take advantage of that and say, "Let's build something that's 50% of the lot size on a one acre, or even a half acre." It's probably impossible to spend that kind of money to build that much house. So I think money will automatically downsize those garages or the houses, you know, because of budgets. You know, I don't think it'll ever be inappropriate out of hand. But I wanted everybody to have this, challenge you to go look at it and maybe schedule a public hearing about it. And maybe the next meeting we could further discussion. I'll try and write up some stuff and get to you before the next meeting.
So we gave a lot of RVs, oh, lots.
You do?
And then garages.
You could, yeah. And I just think that it's, that or junk.
Tell my neighbor, tell my neighbor again.
Anyway, any questions?
This, yeah, this seems to be for 15,000 square foot, or at least there's one sheet. You have 15,000 square foot lot area and a smaller.
Yeah.
That's pretty small, like this area is.
Yeah, but it's.
Is there some sheet that's more relevant, or?
Well, there was actually another one that could have done this more agriculture. And it's, when it's attached, it's the same thing where they don't give you all the lot. Or any size limit on the agricultural part of it.
I guess what I'm saying is you have two acres, you can cover 50% of that, that's a lot to build.
Yeah. But, you know, back to the budget, someone has to be able to rent that kind of tract. For any big building, if they were able to rent that big of a tract, it'd probably be a freaking amazing looking house because it's built in and it's stuccoed and, I mean, that's a part of it.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
But there's still limits on, you know, how tall. And you can't, you know, do a metal building and call that your garage. And it has to be, we're talking about attached garages that's built into the house.
Like your house.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got six or several garages at that point. But it's, anyway, I just think it can end up being a state type of looking as opposed to gee wood, loo wood. You know, when you get out there, the, these 15,000 square foot lots are about a third of an acre on this diagram right here. That's, so when you go to Cedar Point, that means you could have 50% of that lot covered out there on a half-acre lot. But you still have that width limitation, and that just means they're gonna have a deep garage. It's still not gonna look much different from the front, from most homes, it's just gonna be deeper. Because somebody's gonna want a hobby shop. And, but there's still a lot of rules in, even the hurricane ordinance that talks about limiting activities. You can't, you know, have a commercial business, but, you know, have hobbies and, you know, there's a, there's a whole list of things. And I'll get the other agricultural one. I'll put together maybe some suggestions, I'll email to you before the next meeting, you know, a couple weeks out, see if I have time to look at it, we've got about a month out before our next meeting.
So this is hurricane?
This is hurricane, yeah.
I've got, I've got them on my mind, I haven't seen them around in the house yet.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just right out here, I didn't print the whole thing. It's, but there is a agricultural section as well, a different chapter, and.
I do think where we talk about this in our actual ordinances is in the supplemental, chapter 15, so we might want to.
Currently, we're only 50 or 60%, you're saying 60 and that's supplemental.
Sixty is what we said on the new one, but the new one hasn't been passed yet, so.
And the 50% we're at right now.
Yeah.
And it is quite lonely. And anyway, request a lot of the people live here, they would like to be able to throw out a number of garages.
You guys have a flag now?
What?
Flag has a question?
Go ahead.
With our inability to do any kinds of enforcement, you know, on people that are operating businesses out their homes, how are we gonna address something like that? Allow these large garages to go in and, you know, somebody wants to set up a factory in there in a neighborhood? How are we gonna address that?
Well, then it's against code and we can.
It's not allowed.
You know, go after them. I mean, it's, I guess they can do that right now, there's still buildings they build back there, you know. But it's, it's still against the ordinances to do that. They gotta have a conditional use or they gotta have a business license. There's other avenues that they gotta, I's have, the T's have got crossed. But as we, as we know in the community, it's, it's hard. Enforcement on a lot of this stuff is, becomes a challenge. But having the attached garages that are, you know, I just, I just don't see that getting out of hand. I can see it getting out of hand where you allow them to build the, you know, steel buildings and so forth because of the ability then to put up a lot of square footage that's inexpensive. And these buildings, even the steel buildings or buildings that are behind someone's property, the accessory buildings, we'll call them, are still another one that I'd also like to address. We'll leave it on the table right now, but I, I feel like that we need to just double-check with what we have compared to what some of the residents feel like is appropriate. And it could be that what we have is perfect for, you know, that discussion. But anyway, that's, I don't think that there's any way that we can block it anymore than we already have, as far as, to answer your question, Blake.
Yes.
Rich cop, 1193 East Big Canyon. I was one for, you know, 50, 60% of these square footage of the house, the footprint was okay. But if you're telling me that the garage is going to be three, four, five, six car, whatever, and it blends right into the house, I really don't, you probably wouldn't even know that it is a garage. You just assume it's part of the living space and like, who cares at that point? As long as it's not an ice floor.
It's roofline, that's all it is, really.
Right.
So, anyway, I just wanted to open that up. Appreciate your time.
Okay, the next on the agenda is to, we are wanting to make some changes on this general plan, um, general map plan, because the one we have in front of us. Sorry. Well, and it's the one that's, it's the official one. And so if we're wanting to make changes, we do need to go through a hearing.
I sat down too fast. So what brought this up was unbeknownst to many people here, I sent out a survey exclusively to the Bubbling Wells area. And so those people out there, I want their feedback and input. And Bruce is here tonight, and I'll, you know, have to have him chime in. But basically, they wanna see their neighborhood out there be low-density zoning. And right now, I think it's, as far as the general map, I think right now, most of it out there is medium and even smaller, even some of it's even millimeters. And he would, they, everybody that came, all of them said they would like to see it higher, or excuse me, lower density out that direction. And so I wanted to make them move that direction and made it lower density. And then someone comes in and say they wanna do a one-acre lot or two-acre lot out there, we can tell them though because the map says we can. And then we don't do map changes out there because this is what we decided is appropriate for Bubbling Wells in that direction towards the, our town limits. And the, the only discussion, first off, there is really no description for what low density is, and so we wanted to find what that means. You know, it's five acres, it's 10 acres or more, whatever that number is. And so that's what we wanna think about and come up with in our meeting. And public hearing is what that means to us. And Bruce will tell you what he thinks here in a second. Many in the room thought it was a few five acres, didn't know more. That, that area does have the CCNRs that say 10 acres or more is the minimum. Though we do have quite a few five-acre lots out that direction as well. And my understanding from talking with Frank, there are also a few one-acre lots, he owns several of them. And he says, "I would be all for zone changing that into a five," you know, heartbeat. So that way it met, and there will be a precedence with one-acre lots. And he says there's another neighbor that has a couple of one-acre lots, and they would also zone change and to make it a larger parcel. And that way, everything out there is five or more. And that would even, Frank, I understand, I think he's a two and a half. Oh, you're French here, I didn't see what points are. I'll let you speak yourself and.
Yeah, but that was against my wishes. It was, I wanted to just divide my 10 or 11 acres into two parcels, but the previous administration wouldn't let me. They said we didn't have a way to do it. So I had to carve out a piece to, to meet the frontage. So, but I'd love to change that, so it's just two parcels.
Yeah, but today we have a flag law, so we could change.
They did that too, but they, they wouldn't let me fill.
Yeah, anyway, we'll figure that out. I just changed the low five.
Yep.
At least, and then that would be the minimum, and I'm just thinking.
And then we come back.
Because we're talking about doing some general map changes anyway, but I thought it'd be easier to do it one small piece at a time and just do, just that.
Yeah, it's just one acre used to be considered low density. So are we changing terms?
That's, no, we haven't, you know, identified anything. When it comes to medium density or low density, you see high density, medium density would probably be one acre. Low density meaning there's less homes per acre would be like five or more. You might say, for example, one to, just under five is medium density. And then five on up is lower density. So low density means bigger acres.
So are we calling half acres high density?
Yes, so then we go in the other direction where you're, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just don't want one of our half acre lots together.
Well, this is.
We wanna keep our areas, if our area was set up to be one acre, we don't want to open the door to half acres in there.
And that's why, I don't know that we really have a distinct definition of what medium even means. I think that we should clean it up and do that.
Another thing, could we put landmarks on these maps?
Um, there's, there's ways to do that online. You can look at this map and you can make it transparent, you can see what's underneath it. But, so, to answer your question, I'm gonna print out, so.
So.
Do you, you guys wanna say something?
Well, really, all we're really meaning to do today is to set up a hearing so we can discuss this, right?
Right, just what holds us out.
Well, this is to set a hearing so we can make it official and make those changes as well. Well, you can talk about it, as long as you want, you just can't take any action, so. But I'm also not wanting to turn this into a long hearing, which is not really an official hearing.
No.
So, so yeah, we can get a little bit of feedback, but I think most of the feedback should be saved for the hearing and we can actually take some action on it, so.
Okay.
But yeah, if you're wanting to.
Well, give me a little background. The area that I'm most interested in is accessible by a single road, Bubbling Wells Road, north side of the highway. There's no other way in, that's it. That was originally subdivided with no public roads, but all private roads in there on a 40-acre career. And that's what it stands today, they're all private roads. So that's part of the reason, or part of the consideration for that area specifically. And with Marty's survey, the consensus of the general consensus was they wanted the roads to remain as they are. But those roads as they are can't support, you know, high density by any means. So basically, what everybody was saying was, they just wanted it to stay the way it is.
The. Well, to clarify that, you mean, we didn't wanna have a, somebody come in and buy their 40 acres and make 20 lots out of it or 30 lots out of it. In other words, by zoning it this way, we've blocked any future sub-revisions from coming in.
Correct.
And the roads being the same, meaning we don't wanna pay for pavement, we just want, we like the roads like they are. Kind of, that's clear.
That's correct, that's, that was mine, the standard, in general.
Oh, we do need to upgrade it, that pad.
Right.
We just need to find out a way to do it. And I like the partnership we have right now, which we've never had before, is that the town helps us and we help each other. And that's, that's awesome. However, there is some roads that are out there that is gonna be connecting to other parcels that, that needs to be like 2,000, for example. It's the only way you can go from Canaan over to where we're at and over to Cedar Point, is that 2,000. So that, that bound to be a master plan road, and that has to have a different standard than.
Right.
All the other stuff, but those are the things that needs to be ironed out.
Well, if someone gets a building permit or they want a lot split, that's what we're gonna require. Why are you gonna do this to do that, you know?
But the rest of the areas, if there is no reason, if it's not gonna be a public road, then there's no reason to, to maybe dedicate and/or improve to a higher standard if that isn't the standard for that area. But we also need to make sure that our ordinances match that. Otherwise, we will be in conflict every time. So we need to just match, we need to add that in, that that is a possibility. If it's private roads, then this is the standard.
Well, it's kind of in there, but you could okay a private road.
Right, right. And actually, in chapter 15, it refines it. It says it has to be a minimum this wide and has to be approved to, to the road base. So yes, you're right, it, once we pass chapter 15, then it will be taken care of.
So when that area was originally subdivided, there was 18 parcels in, in that area accessed by that one road. 40-acre parcels. Probably 18 40-acre parcels up on Bubbling Wells, north. North of the highway. North, just north of the highways, all I'm talking about. Today, there's about 44 parcels in there. It's been subdivided in various sizes, with no changes to the roads or anything. And if we, in Frank's thinking, maybe five acres, the CCNR said 10. If it goes to five acres, that'd be 144 parcels in that area, potentially 144 houses with no roads. At 18 houses or 44 houses, you know, under current situation, you know, that's workable. But 144, no, it's not workable. I mean, you say, how many parcels originally, north, were you talking about, 40? I counted 18. Oh, 18. 40-acre parcels. I'm on one of the original 40-acre parcels. But there's been subdividing. So my recommendation is, a lot of subdividing and splitting of lots has happened. Many of them below five acres even. I think.
Well, Cedar Point is part of Sunshine Acres, and so that's why we're down that way.
I'm talking about Cedar Point, Cedar Point is, but.
But they were part of the same, same CCNRs.
And there's, there's two and a half acre parcels, five acre parcels, one acre parcels. I don't think that it would be appropriate to somehow tell somebody they, they can no longer have a two and a half acre parcel. You can't really go backwards. But allowing more subdividing without something else changing is, is inappropriate. So really, what I'm saying is that the, the general plan needs to reflect that basically, it's locked, excuse me, locked down the way it is. Not that we're gonna get everybody's grandfather in, but no more adding more parcels without any infrastructure to support. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's very legit, but the only problem is, same thing the mayor and I discussed many times, how do you do it?
Play the general plan and lock it down?
No, yeah, but if somebody comes in, is, is, because it's not in front of their property necessarily, it's the whole road that goes out to it. How do you make one person improve that entire section? Because now we're over the.
You can't. That's why no more subdividing. And grandfather, everybody in who's in, I mean, we're not gonna go backward, but no more subdividing. And then there is no problem with the road. And there is no problem with telling some poor guy that when he goes to build his house, he's gotta pony up $100,000 before he starts building. That's not fair. So I'm just saying, lock it down the way it is.
Well, that's what we gotta do right now, based on ordinances. If the guy comes in and wants to build on his 40 acres, it's, it's probably more like a quarter million dollars to even do road base.
That's, that's not fair either.
And.
Because everybody's bought into the roads the way they are, and we're not, we're not, you know, nobody at that meeting wanted to say, you know what, we're gonna put all pavement in here and everybody builds a house, not the ones that already have houses, they're off scot-free, just the new houses have to pony up huge amount. No, let's just leave it as it is. They're on private roads, everybody's willing to accept the private roads as is without upgrading. Anybody can build a house on that private road, but no more subdividing. That's where the problem comes in.
Are you satisfied with the definition of road out there?
Yes.
No, I don't think that we'll share that view. I mean, I, in, in the interest of safety, I mean, I lived with it a long time, I was one of the first ones out there. And yeah, I lived with it, but it wasn't that big a deal because it was just me and, and one other guy. So the roads didn't get, wasn't getting destroyed every day. So, but now, it's a different story. Now, there's so many people traveling that if, if I dial 911 during the rainstorm we had, the ambulance would not be able to make it out there. It just would not. So I, and I, I think that we need to raise the standard so that, so at least it meets fire code. And then the question is just, you know, how do we do that? Because it is not unsafe, and it's, it's not safe to let other people, or let more people build and/or divide when the roads are in that poor of a condition. Same thing out by Coyote, et cetera. It's just, it, it, the minimum standard is, has gotta be raised just a tad. And, but again, it's the same problem, how do we pay for it? When some people can afford to pitch in, some, if you come and ask them for $200 for fuel, they, they can't do it.
Right.
And so it is, I don't have the magic wand and the solution to the, to the problem, but it is, it's a, I, I think that no matter what, where, the goal should be, even if we wanna be rural, it should still be the minimum standard of fire code. So if there is a fire, if all of a sudden somebody lights up all the trees, then they can make it out there and make sure that we don't have 40 homes that goes down like paradise. I talked to a guy in paradise today. So, and they need to have water. So we need to have those, basically the minimum, whatever fire code is the minimum they require, should be the minimum. And how do we raise us that are out there to that point? That's the question.
And then some progress has already been made in that direction.
Yeah, no, I'm all, it is awesome.
And so what I'm advocating is the property owners that own those private roads certainly need to, are the ones that need to take responsibility for those roads and bring it up to the standards that the property owners agree they need to be. And it doesn't have to be a city involvement, it's just like any private property. We're all property owners, we own those roads collectively, and we can upgrade them and have been upgrading them most, most recently significantly in terms of how well we stood up to the most recent rain. And we can upgrade them and have been upgrading them most, most recently significantly in terms of how well we stood up to the most recent rain.
Huge improvement.
Yeah, huge improvement, and yes, that effort needs to continue, but I don't think it needs to be a city mandate.
What would it cost to upgrade those roads for fire safety? Over.
Eighty cents a square foot is great road base laid, delivered, laid, rolled. So that's, that's a pretty, it's twenty-five feet, so.
And you're going back how far?
Well, it, it's.
Couple miles.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Locked, and then that's even doing more.
Seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand?
Well, if we, if we probably have, well, I don't know, what do you think is, uh, there's two miles up to my house.
Right.
So if we just took that's and then of course Bruce's, he owns his own two miles.
I'm off the grid.
Yeah, but let's just say two miles, what, what is it, uh, five thousand, what is it, what's the number, anybody remember? How many feet? Five thousand two hundred eighty-three times two
That's correct.
times twenty-five times point eight. You're looking at two, two to three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Total.
So you got three hundred thousand dollars and you have a hundred, how many homeowners do we have out there now?
Well, property owners, um, forty-four.
Forty-four, so forty-four would be about fifty thousand dollars a person.
No, no, it's one, four thousand acres, four thousand a piece.
My mouse, my calculator, my brain's.
But that's, that's divided by owners, not by.
Residents.
Residents, by acres, you know, one guy owes four hundred, he has forty, and then there's some that has
Five.
five or two.
But an argument could be made that wear and tear for one resident on a forty acre parcel is the same amount of wear and tear as the person living on two and a half acres.
Right, you could make that argument.
You could make that argument, so would it be fair that each parcel, depending on whatever acreage it is, should share it equally?
Uh, in all the, in the S I D or special assessment areas I've been involved in, it's a combination of frontage versus acreage that they come up with, to come up with a fair distribution.
Unless it's a thorough through that takes you to your parcel, everybody shares on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's how they, but that's how they did it, it's based upon.
But S I A is not a possibility anymore.
No, 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 but that's how they do those.
Not just because of that, because, you know, because they're not town roads, town can't get involved, she can't get an S I A.
Right, right.
So.
So it just has to be amongst the property owners to, to work it out. There's, there's two, there's two aspects to this, one is, how do we solve the problem we already have?
Right.
And you could discuss on and on, how did we get that, one of the ways we got there was by not looking forward to the future. So, what I'm saying, the, the second thing is, how do we keep from getting worse? If we got a problem, that's going to be hard enough to solve if we start subdividing more and more without answering this problem, it only gets worse. So that's why I'm advocating.
Steve did invite you down here sometime, well, I got these young kids, and my wife's crying, because I tell her she can't divide it properly. And, you know, because it's when, that's when the rubber meets the road on these things, is when you're telling somebody, sorry, you can't do that, well, he got to. Well, I know, but we changed the rules, you can't do it anymore. It's, that's where it gets hard being, during my job.
There's always going to be somebody who's not happy with the outcome, and it might be me.
I know, but I'm just saying that, you know, because people do have property rights and they end up in both of them's office and, you know, they're coming after the town because we said, no, on what everybody else has been able to do, you know, and we ended up with lawsuits, it's just going to lose on that one.
Well, on the other hand, as I've said it before, a past mistake is not a precedent for how you behave in the future.
Yeah, but.
We got this way by, we got this way by not having, you know, a good planning.
Just remember, we got to have that.
That's the point of this meeting, put a good plan in place.
Just remember, we got most of that community out there, blood and disconnect from the town, which we devastated tax-wise because of things like this, of not allowing them to even support a piece of property, to make two twenties out of a forty, they think that's ridiculous. So, I mean, it's, it's a complicated issue, it's, to you, it's simple, just don't let anybody do anything. But when it comes to, you know, some of these people that are out there, they have a lot of different feelings than their landowners do. And so, I don't know, it's, it's not an easy, um, juggle, but I'm glad you're sharing with me how you feel, and what.
And, and you could go another route, you say, okay, we're not saying that subdividing is, can't be done, you want to subdivide, fine. You paved the road from the highway to your property and then you can subdivide it.
Yeah, well, that, that would be, they'll, they'll pay two hundred thousand dollars and so it won't happen.
My point, so we're going to pay the two hundred thousand so it can happen?
Well, the other.
One is one more favor than the other.
Okay, all right, I'm on both tracks. So the first step was of course to change the map.
Yeah, do the general map.
Up on roads and all that stuff, so, um, we do need to set a hearing.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm a little confused, you're talking about setting a hearing to change the map. Don't you change the map first and then present it for input?
What do you present at the hearing?
But the input is that you're wanting to make that section at least five plus acres.
Well, it's not just us, it's everybody, you know, the Apple Valley General Plan.
Yes.
No, we're.
What, what are you setting a hearing for?
Because if we're going to change this, we have to have a hearing.
We're talking about changing just the general map in your area only, not the whole Apple Valley, just in that open section where you guys.
Just working on that.
Saying nothing smaller than whatever that number is. And that way at least we're, that way we're preventing someone else to be able to come in here and say, I want to put a subdivision right down the street from you.
Okay, so, the hearing that you're, I'm just trying to understand, so the hearing that you're talking about would be for a change that you iron out before you have the hearing for us to?
You would be, you would be saying a lot of the same stuff that you've been saying tonight. Um, and then we actually have the chance to act on it, where we can say, then forward it to the town council um, for approval for changing part of the general plan map to call it this zone or whatever.
We're, we're a little confused, we, we thought you were working on the entire map.
No, just, just.
And so you're going to work on it piece by piece.
We, we're always kind of working on, but this is a specific piece.
Okay.
Yes, and Blake, Blake has a comment.
I think what we need to do is schedule a work meeting for the planning commission to, uh, come up with a, a product that we can present at a hearing that can be commented on by the public. Right now, we have our old map, which is kind of helter skelter. We need to pin down what, what our vision is based on some of the inputs we've gotten back from our various communities. Then present that at the public hearing to take public comments on, on our vision.
We're, we're not trying to do the whole town.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not doing the whole town, we're just talking about one piece, but yes, we definitely still need to do the whole map. But this is one area that we can at least cross off the list of needing to.
No, we do need a work meeting.
But yes, of course we need a work meeting, because we've always, this has been, we've been running circles with this map for ever. So, no, you're right, we need a work meeting to work on the bigger picture, but this is just the one Bubbling Wells area that we're wanting to at least nail down.
And you'll, you'll nail one, you guys.
So it sounds like we want to do a work meeting, then we'll schedule a hearing after that, does that sound?
Yeah.
Or we understand?
That's fine.
I won't give a better, I just want to.
We're just talking about the one area, this can kind of be the work meeting for that, and then we can just have to, right? I mean, we think.
That's how I feel, it's just that one area, anyway, and then from there, we, I mean, just because we have a, a hearing doesn't mean that we even pass it. Based on the public comments, we may just choose to push off another meeting, so.
But we just need to have hearings so we can have the ability to act.
I, I agree with, with them, because, you know, they have beautiful home out there, and I'd hate to see a subdivision on your needs meal.
I just want to prevent anybody from going down to one or two acre lots out there, because, you know, and I just wanted to stop that based on our conversation, just feedback that we got, so.
Ten would be nice.
Yeah, so, anyway.
So that's kind of how I was seeing, is that how you're saying?
Ten acres?
No, to, um, have a hearing to just make this one just that area. To call it low density and say that low density is five plus acres and medium density is, is one to four point nine acres.
Whatever it is, yeah, whatever you guys decide. I thought, because, you know, Forrest has brought that up before, it's like, what is low density and what is medium density, and we really don't even know.
Well, we have low and we have medium, and then we also have another color for one acre and another color for a half acre, and so, we have a lot of colors.
We have a lot.
I'd like to make it a little more crystal clear.
Yeah, medium, to me, always meant smaller than a half acre, but, you know, it was what they were saying in two thousand eight.
You're a city boy.
I, yeah.
High acres.
That's, yeah, we, we can define our terms, we just have to define our terms, so.
How would the other community like?
All, all, all the more.
Yeah, they might could have, um, medium density, the eight acres.
In most, like in Hurricane, high density is when you're talking six, eight, twelve pounds per acre.
Right.
So, and, so that's, it's a whole different ballgame, we can create our own ballgame and label it however we want. If we don't have any of those, we won't have until we have a sewer system.
So low density here doesn't equal low density.
Exactly, it can be whatever we want it to be.
Right, okay.
So I think, I think before you do the public hearing, you kind of need to know what you're going to call this zone, and so I think that's part of what the discussion tonight was.
Yes.
What are we going to call this, because we need a definition, we're going to call it low density correctly.
We need to know, maybe Bruce could help us here exactly what we're talking about, I mean, I have a really good idea, but.
Bubbling Wells. I can see it port that way till the end of the town.
I can see it.
Because you need your marker and color it in, and then you'll need to call your bats.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I think it's this little area, and what else includes that area plus this, and we need to pin that down somewhere.
Let's do that, and then we'll just do a work meeting next time, and we'll look at it and see if we all agree on it, and then we can do a hearing after that. Not in a rush on this, I just wanted to.
Definitely.
If we're going in that direction, that's all.
Well, we're going to have a work meeting, and we can look at more than just the one area then, I think, yeah.
All the way down.
I think it's, if you know what's coming out to your next meeting, you wouldn't say that.
Okay. I, I need you to tell them what's our next meeting, and then I get to say something about that too, so. Okay, so we want to schedule a work meeting for the twenty-seventh of March?
I was going to say, not next week.
Twenty-seventh?
I don't know, yes, anyway. Um, we are having a meeting on March thirteenth. You're not.
You're not.
No meeting.
That's spring break, and Michelle's going out of town, and it's ready for my birthday, and, you guys have a meeting without me, that's fine, don't worry about that.
No, we can't do that.
But I'll just say, I'm a lot.
We're, 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 just a work meeting?
Oh, a work meeting.
Um, when?
She's right there.
What are you, what are you saying, Blake?
I'm just proposing that we maybe, you know, a week from tonight, come together and just do a work meeting. We don't have a town council.
Yeah, a week from tonight is, a week from tonight is town council.
Uh, no, you're a week from me.
It's the last week of the two quarters.
We're scheduled for the town meeting. Uh, Jepson Canyon.
Huh?
Jepson Canyon, oh, you're talking about for the town?
Yeah.
Um, we've got a, a few things that'd be on track, I remember, I have to go back and read it again, I think it's pretty full of them.
Okay.
Well, and some things might need to be moved around too, I mean, I'm not interested in having like a three hour meeting, so.
You want your day off and you don't want to pay for it, huh? I see what you're saying.
Oh, my day off, that I'm paid off, paid for, yeah, I'm rolling the dough with this job. So, so, yeah.
I'm teasing, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying, let's, let's not overload us, you know, because I want to keep things in a, at a sane, sane level.
Just, uh, Jepson Canyon presentation.
Okay, so that's the.
We've already had it, but it's a review of what we've already had, so.
So review of Jepson is on the twenty-seventh, too. Okay, is that, is that it? Do you want me to look? Did you have it in?
I'm not positive, but anything else, we probably can back if it's a busy meeting for you. I don't know, but, uh, I think we had a, uh.
Do you want me to look?
Yes, please.
Can't, can't remember what we, else we had.
This is something we should work with town council and line up, so, we'd really like your input.
Well, we get to have our input at the end, so, I just think that most of the council shows up anyway, we'll make sure they do.
Uh, was it the preliminary cyclone review for West Temple?
Uh, that's the only other one, yeah, but, uh, if I've got to push that, I mean, I can do that.
That's what I see on here.
West Temple is the project up by the, on the pivots for travels.
Well, I think if we're having a work meeting for this and we're having the Jepson Canyon, um, review, I think that's, I think that's a full meeting, that.
Jepson Canyon could be a full meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's a full meeting and a half.
I don't have to do back on that either, so.
Uh, in this work meeting that we're discussing, well, Michelle's found this old or older, uh, written general plan, can we maybe go over some of that and see if that needs updating? If it doesn't take as long.
That's a different, that's a different one.
Anything different?
I think so.
That took us months to.
Yeah, I know, it did, it was a little bit. I'm glad, I'm glad it's good, but it's great.
But yes, we, and, and just like, we also need to.
Well, I'm, I'm just talking if there's something simple that could be talked about.
Look at it, highlight it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
So nobody's following the general, they, this one that we just did, nobody follows it anyway, so.
I, I delivery.
So then we might just want to look at this one section of the general plan.
Okay, just the map.
The one you got printed and the one that's on the wall are slightly different, and that's the one we just barely had made by, um, Ensign, and this one is dated at two thousand eighteen. So I'm thinking.
So you have landmarks on?
Was that one, did that one go through a hearing and was accepted and all of that, I mean, if it's different, then it's.
Let's look at, we'll make sure.
Because this is the one that I am aware.
You talking about that twenty fifteen map over there?
No, that's.
This one right here.
Those are zoning maps, aren't they?
Yeah, that, that's a map, I assure you, is about ninety percent of all.
This is the one that you and Debbie worked on.
There's one on the left, sir.
No, I'm just saying that this one on the left is the one that Ensign did, based on input from you and Debbie.
Yeah, the little one on the left.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The, the one that Bruce is looking at?
Yeah, that's, that's the one that.
Not a good map.
Why, the one he's looking at right now?
Well, if you ask how good, I can show you.
Well, I just printed that off of Ensign's work that we paid him fifteen thousand dollars for from you guys going through.
No, that, that was way before us, sir.
No, this is, well.
Twenty fifteen, I wasn't even here in twenty eighteen.
I don't know what, where the date came from, I went to the website, I printed that off of what we currently have from Ensign. Just email.
From the Ensign website?
Um, well, here, here's the easiest way to look at it, look at the little one on the left.
Yeah.
And see how little of that thing is colored? And you look at the thing where Bruce is looking at, you see all the darker colors on that? Those are all supposedly zoning, not plans, it says zoning.
Well, there's a difference in a general map and a zone, I think one might be zone, one might be general map.
I think this one's labeled correctly, this looks like the, um, plan, and this looks like current zoning.
Yeah, the, the zone one is the one that you guys made from.
I know what it says, but it looks exactly like the plan.
It does.
The, the old plan, all the way from two thousand eight.
Yeah, it, it does, it looks like it, but then you read the legend and it's, I, I, what I'm missing is it's backwards.
Okay, but this one is the last one that's actually been approved, I'm pretty sure.
Michelle and I'll do some homework, we'll try and figure that out.
Yeah, it's, I, it is, there is absolutely no way that's.
All we, all we can do is find the most recent legitimately passed one. All we, all we can do is find the most recent legitimately passed one.
Now, like Bruce said, if you, if you send darker colors are general plan colors, that's closer to correct. Because there's huge areas on there that are zoned, but they're not zoned on, on the zoning map, that's what I'm saying.
If I can just offer a bit, um, the, this one is the one that would accompanies the written general plan.
You, you're talking about the one you gave us, exactly.
So that, this is the one that was passed with this.
Right, well, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay, let me commotion that on, uh, March twenty-seventh, we have a work meeting for Public Wells.
All right.
Rowan.
All right, I second, vote.
Aye.
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 I, I didn't hear all the details on that, can you please repeat it, sorry?
Just that we're gonna have a work meeting on the specific area of Bubbling Wells that we were talking about tonight.
And when, when is that gonna occur?
On the twenty-seventh of March.
Okay, so, uh, aye.
Okay. And then we'll follow that with the Jepson Canyon, let's see, see how that goes.
And then we'll have, I, I, uh.
We'll schedule a hearing now, so we'll just take our.
But this is, this is what Dave wants, you know, and I hate to tell people what to do with their name, I really do.
But in the meantime, we'll also kind of look through the garage thing.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a great idea, by the way.
All right.
I want it a little bit bigger than that.
We don't have, we don't have minutes to prove this much.
Same here.
Just call the man.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Same here.
All right, so.
And at the same time, we should update and create definitions of low, medium, and high density.
Yeah, at the work meeting, we'll decide what we're gonna call that one section and what that stands exactly, okay, sounds good. Okay, well, then I move that we venture on the meeting.
Second.
Hey, votes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yay, hi, it's a good one.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you. That's right, see you next time.